More Law Center. So it's like, these people are using millions of dollars to demonize Muslims, but also to try to drain us financially. I've been sued. CARE has been sued. You know, and, and these people such as the Thomas More, the Thomas More Law Center is behind it. So, we, we, we look back, you know, there's a saying where there's smoke, there's fire. Well, there's certain groups that have millions of dollars. There are, there are professional haters, and their job is to demonize the community, but also to try to drain our resources.
Well, look at what, what's happened elsewhere in the country with this issue. In the state of Oklahoma, so much money, so many resources were put into the state legislature to try to ban Sharia law, that the budget was never discussed to build shelters to prevent injury and death and destruction during tornadoes. And we saw over the last few weeks, the aftermath of these tornadoes and the carnage that they caused. What good did it do to go ahead and ban Sharia, which wasn't even a threat? It was not even anything more than a phantom menace? And yet, you have people who are dead, you have people whose property is destroyed irrevocably.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to hold that thought. I want to come back. Nabeel, don't go away. I want to come back to you as well. This is Night Shift. One more segment in this hour. It's going by quickly, folks. Stay where you're at. This is 11:30 AM WDFN. I'm Tony Trupiano. We'll be back right after this. As I often say, sometimes the best stuff happens during the break, and I apologize for that, but you should have shown up. I do want to again mention, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to you, anything that we've talked about tonight, not just Islamophobia right now, if there's anything on your mind, if you'd like to, just, don't, don't be afraid to step up. Come on, step up, and, and we'll certainly do that. Nabeel, let me, before we, before we get to this gentleman's comment or question, ignorance is a terrible thing. I, I live in the Dearborn area. I, I guess I'm naive, because I think we're all getting along pretty damn well, to be honest with you. But I know that's not true. And we look at, well, we'll use TJ as an example. You know, what Terry Jones has done is reprehensible, and the, the guy just makes my skin crawl. How do we, I don't know, how do we fight that? Because it seems when we do it, 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 it tends to lead us to violence. It tends to bring out the worst and even the best of us. And, and, you know, certainly, you counsel people. I mean, you tell people, "All right, keep your cool." But sometimes, it's hard to do that.
Absolutely, Tony. I've counseled the mayors, we've counseled the institutions, you know, religious institutions as well. I mean, first of all, what you don't want to do is, you don't want to give in to what they're trying to make you do. And that is, they're trying to get a violent reaction back from you. Okay? They're, they're trying to, trying to fit you into the stereotype that they want you to be part of, to see, "See, I told you, there is that violent Muslim, or that violent Arab, or that violent, you know, African American, or what have you." They, you know, so, the first, not to, not to fall into that. Second, just like the festival, you know, if you look at the festival when they were supposed to throwing bottles and things of the, it was literally all children. There were minors, there were kids. All the adults, I was very proud of our community. When I say our community, Arab community, Muslim community, they didn't fall into this. They, they backed up, they didn't go in there and start, you know, challenging these individuals, get into their face. But these individuals came with pig heads, real pig heads, with flies on them, putting them in the kids' faces, telling them, "You're gonna go to hell. Your prophet Muhammad was a pedophile, or, you know, he was a molester, he's this, you're all gonna burn in hell," and screaming at these kids. So they were trying to get this reaction. And like Daoud was saying, absolutely, they're well-funded, these guys go around the country, do this to different stages and what have. These are the same people that go and demonstrate at the funerals of armed services, you know, people that died for this country. While the loved ones are trying to bury, the families trying to bury their loved ones, they're out there demonstrating, cussing them, and saying certain names against them. The First Amendment is such a powerful tool. It's just such a powerful tool. We understand that. So, this is, this is their, this is their, this is their agenda, and we cannot fall into that. That's why we need to go out there and, and meet violence and meet hate with, with understanding, explain the message, preach the gospel. And what's important, in addition to what Daoud was saying, is that at that festival, there was about six other Christian groups that were preaching the gospel. There were, some of them took boots, they were passing out literature, preaching the gospel. Those are fine. They're, they're absolutely great. It's these, and, and by the way, the festival was put on by a, a Christian ministry group down from Florida, that about 200 volunteers, this festival, this Arab festival would not have been possible without this group that comes every year. And by the way, it's been going on for 18 years, this festival. They come, they put, they camp out, they have, you know, 200 employees, basically volunteers that help to make this a success. And they're Christians. They're not, they're not Muslims. But, you know, all that is fine. It's these group of individuals that, again, all they're trying to do is take advantage of the First Amendment and try somehow, some way to demean this community. Like I said, they had over a million hits on YouTube, and then they get money from the Christian right, who are ignorant to what's going on, under these circumstances.
Thank you, Nabeel. I appreciate that. Why don't you come on up, just introduce yourself, and tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you. So my name is Jeff Boyce. I was born and raised in Oakland County, and I just moved back to the Detroit area. And I want to thank you for this conversation, for all of the panelists. This is such a fantastic forum for talking about these issues and airing them, especially I'm happy to know that this is not just those of us in this room, but, but going out over the radio, so lots of people can benefit. But, I want to, I want to ask a question. It dawns on me, when we talk about something like Islamophobia, it tends to be cast as something like individual bias, or misunderstanding. And, of, of course, we know there's a great deal of that, and, and I don't want to minimize that. But, but it also seems that there is, you know, part of what the Muslim community has experienced since September 11th especially, is disproportionate scrutiny and suspicion as a matter of federal policy. Whether that's, you know, people being harassed at the border, or, you know, deportation and the effects that it has on, on families and things like that. And one of the gentlemen earlier spoke about the baptism by fire that different groups in, in US history have had to experience. And of course, I, I think we can all, you know, there are, there's no shortage of examples to speak of, but one of the most striking parallels, it seems to me, that we could draw would be the experience of Japanese Americans during World War II, which was a deeply shameful episode in, in US history, which, of course, Congress and, and has since formally apologized for and made reparations to, to, to the survivors of the internment camps. And the reason why I bring that up is, is that one of the things that it strikes me when thinking about those parallels is how, how much we don't talk about that history, right? And how much, how ignorant so many people are about that history, and the way these hysterias and sort of national security discourses come to justify really violent, you know, really disruptive, really damaging policies and discriminatory policies. But I also bring that up because it seems, it seems like, you know, when we think of a baptism by fire kind of thing, it, you know, that, that, I, I'm hopeful, I would like to think that eventually, we can all look back on, on the experiences that, that the Muslim community's gone through as an unfortunate period that has passed, right? At some point in the future, that, that we can all, you know, look at that. But in the meantime, of course, it's doing great damage, right? To people emotionally, psychologically, to, you know, to people who experience the kind of harassment and, and, and the, the very, you know, unfortunate reality. And so I just wonder if, if you all can, can speak to some of, you know...
All right. And I'm gonna ask you actually to wait, because we're, we're up against the top of our... First of all, let me tell you, that was one of the most intelligent pieces of oratory I've heard in a very long time. Thank you for being who you are. No, I'm serious. I really appreciate how deeply you thought about that. I mean, it means a great deal. You brought something to the table today. I want to thank you for that. We're gonna take a very quick break here. We'll come back. We've only got one more hour. And you can stay right there, or come back after we take the break. At the top of the hour, we're gonna get to all this. We're gonna talk a little foreign policy as well. And I do want to talk about 9/11, because that really was the centerpiece of why we're all here right now. I'm Tony Trupiano. This is Night Shift. I want to thank all of our wonderful hosts here at the Muslim Center in Detroit. We'll take the break and come back on WDFN right after we do this. Hard to believe it, but we are in the last hour of our program today. We are live from the Muslim Center on West Davidson in Detroit. I'm having an incredible time. You know, I'd say the problem I'm gonna have is, I'm not gonna be able to turn my brain off tonight. And that's not a bad thing. When I can't sleep because I feel so good about what we're doing, and all of the questions it brings, and I honestly can't wait to come to a service. I'm gonna do that next week for sure.
Please.
I'm absolutely gonna do that. And I invite others to join me. We, we had an amazing dialogue at the end of the last hour, so, and, and I don't want to have to reset the whole thing, because it was really quite involved. I think everybody remembers what was going on. Professor, I want to start with you.
Well, the, the question was, what was fantastic, because it touches on so many different issues regarding Islamophobia. Now, invoking the treatment, or the mistreatment of Japanese Americans during World War II, as, as we remember, or as some people would, would prefer we forget, Japanese Americans were summarily rounded up, and they were interned in, in concentration camps. There's no other definition of the word, places like Manzanar in California. And more sordidly, the Supreme Court decision, Korematsu versus United States, is still valid on the books. It is still considered constitutional, that it would be acceptable in case there was a, a point of hysteria, as was mentioned in the question. Moral panic is actually, I think, a term that we should become comfortable using, because we are in the midst of a similar moral panic right now, that Muslims are being made to feel that, "Well, you should just be glad that you weren't interned like the Japanese, so you're welcome." This is, this is the conceit that is being put out there. And in many ways, since 9/11, Muslims have become the proverbial canary in the coalmine, that a lot of the laws which were hastily passed through Congress, such as the USA Patriot Act, ones that regarded surveillance and securitization. Well, now we find, to use another phrase, that the chickens are coming home to roost. Today, there were congressional investigations and testimonies given regarding the IRS allegedly targeting certain conservative organizations when it came to their tax-exempt applications, or this idea of the surveillance of journalists and having their emails read, and their wire, their wiretapping of their phone lines. Well, welcome to the Muslim world, because in many ways, these same measures have been underway for the last 12 years, and no one has raised a single outrage of it until they finally started to affect other Americans. So it's kind of interesting that we've come full circle when it comes to government action in, in this regard. And this conceit that people had, that these actions would only be targeting Muslims, was a fallacy. But what it shows, though, is that there's a moral panic underway in this country, which may have started on 2000, in 2011, probably started a little bit earlier, but I can tell you where it's leading. It's leading to the year 2043. Because by then, 30 years from today, is when by all census estimates, the United States will become a majority-minority country. And so what we're finding then, is an anxiety that is starting to build in many different quarters of this country. Case in point, on Election Day in 2012, so many people were saying on television, and particularly certain networks, and one in particular, that traditional America is over. Well, that is code for a particular complexion, shall we say, of America. And Islamophobia needs to be located, not as a disease, but as a symptom, in this broader panic, which is not just looking and targeting Muslims, but also other demographic groups who are going to represent this new mosaic of a majority-minority America. So campaigns and legislation that targets voter IDs, immigration reform, labor and trade unions, the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer community, reproductive rights and other gender issues, as well as Islamophobia, all seem to be emanating from the same usual suspects. So Islamophobia has to be seen not as just a singular problem in isolation, but as part of a broader malaise that is affecting this country on a series of social issues.
And, and what I... If I could chime into, Tony.
Absolutely.
And by the way, you mentioned Japanese Americans in California. I got a message from a colleague of mine in CARE, San Francisco Bay Area. Samina Ossamaan was listening right now, so you're, you're being listened to all across the United States right now, Tony.
Wonderful.
In, in terms of this, I, I think that there's also a challenge for the American Muslim community in regards to what I discussed earlier, as far as Islamophobia being seen within the context of the history of racism in America, as well as what Professor Khan just elaborated on as well, that this is a challenge for the Muslim community to see itself and to be involved in more actively than we are right now. We're involved, but more actively in the broader social justice struggles and of other people. Because once we understand, if we're fighting for the rights for Native Americans, like for instance, I wrote a piece that's gonna be in Detroit News tomorrow regarding these racist mascots that are continued to use to be, to dehumanize Native Americans, when we start speaking up and getting involved with the rights of Native Americans, and Latinos, and African Americans who aren't Muslim, and other people, and people who are involved in the workers' rights movement, in the labor movement, then the solidified, that those natural allies are already there, their relationships and the bonds will solidify. Part of the problem at 9/11 was, yeah, in, in, in theory, or we'd say in principle, many of the things that took place, like the Patriot Act, and then the doing away with the FISA Court, Americans, in principle, disagreed with that if it affected them. But because we were Muslims, and we were seen as the other, because certain parts of our community, and primarily non-African-American Muslims, weren't as engaged in this broader social justice struggle as much, then the Muslim community overall was otherized, but you know, okay, those things are bad, but those aren't happening to us. So then, like when, and he mentioned, I'll give another example, when we had the so-called underwear bomber issue in Detroit, Muslims were being subjected to double screening, and then they had those machines that could look through clothing. When it was just Muslims, it was fine, but the next holiday season, people start saying, "Don't touch my junk." You know why? Because the same secondary screening that Muslims have been going through, then Joe Sixpack, or Joe the Plumber, his junk was being touched. When it was Daoud and Saad Khan and Imam Mika Elson out there, when we're getting our so-called junk checked, oh, it's no problem. You see? But then, when it starts spreading over to the rest of society, you know, see, it doesn't stop with Muslims. When, when the, when the erosion of civil rights and civil liberties, it might start with one group, but it, it seeps over into the rest of the broader society. But anyway, I'm giving a challenge to the Muslims who are listening right now, and I had someone from Twitter contact me, all the way from London, and, and British Muslims are dealing with some of the same issues. From London to the Bay Area, we have to get more involved in the broader social justice movement, and start working with our Latino brothers, our Asian brothers, Native Americans, people in the labor movement who are poor, white, we're, we're all part of the 99% anyway. I think everyone listening right now is part of the 99%. So we have to get more involved as Muslims.
Well, you know what, and I want to give a little feather in the cap to Congressman John Dingell. You'll remember when he was harassed at the, at the airport, and he said, "You will not treat me any differently than you treat my constituents." And that, what he meant by that was my Muslim constituents. And so he allowed himself to be literally persecuted that day. They put him through a living hell. And then, when they finally figured out who he was, because they wouldn't listen, because they don't listen, "Oh, well, then it was different." And he said, "No, it's not. You will continue this process, and you will pay for it." And my, did they pay for it. All right. Any more comments on...
Just to slightly elaborate, I mean, we had a conversation off-air, but it's definitely a double standard with everything. You know, when it happens to the Muslims, for instance, the Boston Marathon, or 9/11, you know, it's blamed on the religion. When you have the Virginia attack, Colorado shooting, the Bay shooting back in 1972, which was a 39 massacre of children, and then the man shot himself and his wife and two adults at Baytown, Michigan, you know, it's, "Oh, they're crazy. You know, it must be a mental illness." But when it comes down to us, it's like, "Oh, no, no. This is what your, you know, religion is teaching you. This is what you guys practice in your sanctuaries, this is what your parents teach you, what, you know, the Quran teaches you, and what you guys practice." So it's definitely a double standard. When it happens to us, it's definitely like, "Oh, this is okay. You know, they deserve this." But when it comes to the other side, and you know, the grass isn't green anymore, it's like, "No, no, no, no. I, I don't want to be here."
How do we solve this problem?
Education. I mean, we need to allow ourselves to mingle, to educate ourselves, to understand one another, to agree to disagree, to respect one another. And I, I'd hate to think that any religion would practice, or would preach otherwise, that any type of hatred, or not loving your neighbor, or, you know, respect. I think every religion, be it polytheistic or monotheistic, I believe every religion teaches that, and we need to go back to that core.
You heard me say this when they were in praying. And here's the problem. We live in this moralistic society that relies on whatever their personal religion is as the moral compass for what they do. But when that moral compass is so skewed that north points west, and west points east, they think they're educated. These are people that think they are right. They believe that if somebody is of a different religion, and if somebody is of a different skin color, if somebody wears a scarf on their head, they are therefore the enemy. How do, you know, and they believe they're educated. That's the problem here. They're not. In fact, they're quite ignorant.
Yeah. I mean, I was saying that earlier, because I wear the hijab, I'm looked at as being oppressed. My freedom is taken, my free will is taken. But when you see a nun wearing, you know, her head covering, she's practicing Christianity, she's respected, you know, she's, she's looked at differently. And it's a double standard, but, I mean, it's hard, because it's like, being ignorant because you want to be ignorant is one thing, but being ignorant because you don't know is another.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay, another break here. Wow, it's gonna, we're gonna try to get to it. We have a Twitter question that we're gonna get to, and I believe we have somebody from the audience that wants to get to a question as well. And of course, if you want to join us, you better call now, because it's gonna be over before we know it. 888-552-3595. Again, I'm Tony Trupiano. This is Night Shift on 11:30 AM WDFN. A very quick break here. We'll be back and continue right here, right after we do this. Welcome back. It is 22 minutes after 10 o'clock. We are live from the Muslim Center here in Detroit, Michigan. Having a great time. We do have a, a comment from the audience, and introduce yourself, please, and tell us what's on your mind.
Hi, Tony. My name is Ender Degetha, and I'm actually an evangelical Christian.
What a beautiful name!
Oh, thank you. I've actually been in full-time ministry, on and off, for the last 11 years, and have worked in the Middle East and in Asia. And one of the things that's really important to me about attending this evening was to extend that opportunity to continue the conversations that we need to have up front, about even within my own evangelical community, that fear that might be, be talked about behind the scenes, that we really need to bring out into the open. And one of the things that's not happening, I feel like in my church, is that, that the negative side of those conversations aren't being said out loud. Things are being talked about behind closed doors, and we need to bring those conversations to the forefront, just as much as within the Muslim community, you have individuals who are extreme in their thinking. We have that within the evangelical movement, and we need to address that. There are individuals in our country who are moving us towards that Islamophobia in ways that we have not seen before. I know, I've been witness to it. I've been at the tables, I've heard the conversations, and I want to acknowledge that. And to my brothers and sisters in Christ, are we going to walk out the peace of Christ, or are we going to pick up the revenge and, and walk in war? It's happening here in Dearborn. We're seeing, I, I can't even tell you how disappointed I am that the American Festival is being canceled. This is one, this is a travesty, and those of us in the evangelical community who are hearing my voice right now should reach out to our Muslim brothers and sisters and say, "This cannot happen again. This should not happen again." So I just want to say, "Thank you for having me here," and I appreciate everything that's being shared.
Thank you.
Before you go, can you please announce, I was talking to Tony about this before the show, can you please give us the time for the mayoral debate Saturday in southwest Detroit?
Absolutely. We're having, in southwest Detroit, we're having a mayoral debate with all of our candidates for the mayor of Detroit, from 11:30 to 3:00 PM. It's actually gonna be taking place in Clark Park. And if you have any questions and would like to attend, please call Congress of Communities. I'm sorry that I don't have that number offhand. And it also is on our Twitter feed, @CongressOfCommunities, and their website. I'm not actually with Congress of Communities, but I am a part of the southwest Detroit community, and I extend that invitation out to anyone who would like to attend and hear from the mayoral campaign, and be a part of that. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and I, I strongly encourage Muslims, especially Detroit residents, to also go there. I plan to be there for at least part of it. And I have a question for Mr. Duggan in regards to his position in the right to work, but then that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother discussion.
Absolutely. We have a Twitter question that came to us quite a while ago, and, and so let's get to the Twitter question, and then we'll get to the next audience question after that. Who wants to give us the Twitter question? Professor?
Sure. It says, "How do you believe your education would benefit the advancement of Islam and its position in modern science?" And this is a multi-layered question, and I appreciate the, the tweet, talking about social media here. First of all, as a historian, it, it's, it's part of my DNA to go ahead and remind people of the history of, of science and Islam. First of all, these have never been incompatible. A thousand years ago, the fields of optics, the very word chemistry, the very word algebra, physics, medicine, architecture, any possible scientific mathematical field that one can imagine, was either pioneered or perfected under Islamic civilization, a very rich, a very vibrant one, and a very tolerant one. What we find today, though, with modern science, are two issues that have caused a lot of barriers, not only with Muslims, but with others. One is the fact that science has now become a commodity. So it's not a matter of what you produce, but who owns it. And the other factor is that science has become more of a pursuit to disprove God. And this becomes very difficult for those people who do come from a faith background to engage in this, because this seems as though, and to borrow from another religious tradition, this becomes the shibboleth. This is what you have to leave at the door, your faith, in order to be accepted within a scientific community. And this new legion of scientists, people like Richard Dawkins, people like Stephen Hawking, have made it a mission to demonize, dehumanize, and to discredit not only religion, but people of faith. Now, this becomes problematic for any card-carrying Muslim who is engaged and who has a passion in, in science, for whom the tradition of incompatibility has never existed between science and religion. That may be something that we have found in the so-called West, going back to the church's mistreatment of Galileo, and other rather dark and sordid periods of either church or Christian history. But that's not something that Muslims are used to, but now they find themselves having to combat or to defend their faith when it comes to their, their activities. So this becomes very problematic. For a Muslim to go ahead and venture to the highest levels of scientific research and progress is not different than somebody like, say, a Dr. Francis Collins, the pioneer of the human genome, who is unabashedly and unapologetically an evangelical Christian. And he talks about the elegance of his faith, and the elegance of God that he sees in the work that he does. That kind of rhetoric is something that anybody of a faith community should feel free to and should be entitled to use. So when it comes to this tweet question, as to how this can then advance Islam, well, Islam will advance itself. It doesn't really need the help or the facilitation of any human being, or any Muslim for that matter, to do so. But the idea of reconciling science and religion is something that Muslims are not uniquely, but certainly very prominently capable of doing and demonstrating, that this is not some kind of clash of civilizations. It is not a choice that people have to make between their scientific rational side and their human emotional side, which is manifested by religion.
Why do you think the question supposes there was a separation?
Because in every single classroom in the United States today, whether one is in elementary school, middle school, high school, or in the university, the entry point is that you leave your religion at the door. You leave your faith at the door, and then you can be a rational, sapient player in the field of science.
All right. I just, and you're right, unfortunately, and, and you're right. We do have somebody, I don't know if you have a question or a comment. We do have somebody, I don't know if you have a question or a comment. We only have a couple minutes before the break. Would you rather we waited till after the break? Because I don't want to shortchange you of time. Okay, very good. With that said, certainly, we should talk a little bit, very quickly, about CAIR. It's C-A-I-R, for those that are not familiar with it. Tell us a little bit about your organization.
CAIR Michigan is a branch of America's largest civil liberties and activist organization, advocacy organization for American Muslims. We have 38 offices across the United States of America. I'm the executive director of the Michigan chapter. Basically, what we do in a nutshell is three parts of our work. First, we do education to the broader community, as well as educate our community about our rights. We do some legislative work and advocacy around important civil rights issues. And we also mediate and in some cases litigate where necessary regarding discrimination cases, be it against private individuals or the government.
All right. A quick break here. We only have another half hour left, folks, so if you've got something to say, now's the time to do it. I am Tony Trupiano. We're off to the break. We'll be back on WDFN right after this. All righty, welcome back. It is 35 minutes after the hour. Folks, I promise you, these next two segments are going to fly by. Did we have the, yes, we'll get her the microphone and get to her question or comment. Just introduce yourself, please, and tell us what's on your mind.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tariq Abdurashid, and I guess this is a response to the question you had about how do we solve these problems? And one of the things I believe that we need to do is to begin to look at history. And just to reiterate what a lot of the panelists were saying, is education and education. But to go a little deeper than what's on the surface and taking care of everyone else and people of different faiths, we need to educate ourselves. You know, none of this stuff is new, you know, in regards to the mistreatment and different things. So if we look back at the way Prophet Muhammad, prayers and peace be upon him, handled these situations, he handled it with patience, you know, and he endured the mistreatment. And so educating ourselves on that and also developing a connection with him, you know, recognizing that we're human and that he's human. And I think that'll begin to solve a lot of the problems and deal with a lot of the issues that we face within our own community, and we can begin to lead by example. And I think that was basically, and I get nervous when I speak, I apologize.
That's okay.
And in regards to handling different things within the community, this phobia, I believe, not only exists with other religions and other communities outside of us, but it exists within our own communities in regards to, we spoke earlier about realizing that, you know, we're human, and the phobia that exists due to the way we're taught things in our own mosque or church, and the, I'll say, traumatization of the way that we're taught. And if we develop a safe space, so to speak, to where people are comfortable, you know, making mistakes and learning and growing, and we're there to nurture them, we'll begin to, with the education, develop a confidence of who we are, but that comes with education. Because, again, when we lack education, that's when all of the emotional reactions, you know, come into play, and we're over-emotional, and we have, you know, the situations that we have here.
Well, and I don't know that it's necessarily a black mark to be overly emotional, or, I mean, one of the things I truly try to work on is the patience thing, and I'm not terribly good at it. I'm still working at it, and I hope to find, I hope to find a comfortable place at some point with patience. What I find interesting is that, and what you were saying really kind of jogged this for me, really, we should be measured by not what we do when we are with others, but what we do when we are alone. And really, what you were saying, Rung, really kind of resonated with me in that way, because it's easy to come out, I mean, I can come out here and profess that, you know, I'm human and I don't understand, and I've done this really nice thing, and we're having this, but what happens once I go home? You know, what happens when I have that dialogue with myself? Am I being honest? Am I being hateful? Am I being mistrusting? Am I being racist? That's the honest conversation we have to have with ourselves. All the education in the world does no good if we don't go home and apply it to who we are. Just my thoughts. Come on up if you want something, if you have something to say, come on up.
I agree with your comments 100%, and you can come up for your comment or your question. I will say, and this is something that, you know, that we have to be, as Muslims, we have to be honest with ourselves first, and we as Muslims, why we do have challenges that are coming from the outside community and status quo, we do have our own internal differences, we have our own internal issues, we have issues of classism and racism within our own community that we have to work against. We have, just as there are some Christians who, as a matter of fact, I had a conversation with a Christian of one particular denomination who tried telling me that Catholics weren't even Christians and they're all going to hell. Well, we have Muslims sometimes who are of one particular persuasion who say, "Well, this other group of Muslims are..."